I hereby call this meeting to order. This is the regular Planning Commission meeting for the Village of Oxford. Today is December 3rd, 2019. It's now 7:00 PM, and I hereby call this meeting to order. Like we always do for these meetings, I'd like you all to please stand and join with me in saying a pledge of allegiance to a flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag-
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all very much. All right, Madam Secretary, looks like we have a full house tonight. If you'd be kind enough to call the roll, I'd appreciate it very much.
Bama.
Here.
Curtis.
Here.
Hook.
Here.
Douglas.
Here.
Thomas.
Yes.
Daller.
Here.
Sylla.
Here.
Good. Looks like we have everyone here. Thank you all for your attention. I appreciate being here. Bless you. If that's what that was. All right. First off, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve this evening's agenda, which should be before you. Hope you've had a chance to review that. Looks like we have one item in our meeting tonight, aside from our few regular duties.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda for December 3rd, the regular Village of Oxford Planning Commission meeting.
Support.
All right, Madam Secretary, I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda. I have support for that motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Good. Thank you very much. We have an approved agenda. I would now turn our attention to approval of this evening's, or the previous meeting minutes. Those were from the November 19th meeting, which we held last month. Those minutes are included in your package. Hopefully, you've had a chance to review that. One of the things I wanted to make everyone aware of is that last time, we did schedule a public hearing for December 17th. So, we will not need to entertain that tonight. That's already taken care of. But I would accept a motion to approve those minutes unless there's any changes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the November 19th, 2019 Planning Commission for the Village of Oxford.
Second.
All right. Madam Secretary, once again, I have a motion on the table to approve the previous minutes from the November 19th, 2019 meeting. I have a second for that motion. All those in favor of adopting those minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Good. Thank you very much. We have approved minutes. Madam Secretary, I don't believe we have any correspondence in our package. I did not see any, so we'll skip over that item. We are not having a public hearing tonight. So, that takes us to old business. And then, we're going to move right into a consideration of our adult-use marijuana ordinance, and we're going to have a review of that tonight. And so, in your package, you've been provided a edited version, which has comments on it from both our planner and our attorney, who's good enough to be here tonight. Bob, thank you very much for taking the time to spend a few moments with us. It should be a very brief meeting, I expect. Nevertheless, you never know how things are going to turn out.
I get paid by the word. We're going to be here a while.
That's okay. It's a big document, so we appreciate your attendance. Mario, as always, I'd like to turn this meeting over to you at this point, and let you take it away.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Yes, as you have in front of you is a revised version of the adult-use marijuana ordinance. It mainly reflects a lot of the changes that, from the initial review by Attorney Davis. Mainly, it's talking about making sure there's consistency in the language when we reference the village, and then, in a method to more succinctly address the department that does regulate currently adult-use marijuana. So, on page 1, there's just a definition for the department. And then, the word "department" is utilized throughout the ordinance when referencing, one thing- this particular use right now, that being the Department of Licensing and Regulatory Affairs. Made in further down to paragraph 1, paragraph 4, and leave further along under the definition of state license under 13. And then, the ordinance mainly just goes through it and references the village specifically as Village of Oxford when it needs to, and to be consistent. The real substantive change that I did make was if you go all the way to page 4, paragraph E, 1099, adding the requirement that the applicant submit liability, liability release and insurance. So, this is new language that, just to make sure that, once again, they, very importantly, they execute a release of liability to indemnify and hold harmless the village regarding any kind of activity on the site. And then, also to make sure that they have adequate liability coverage for this proposed use. So, that's the main substantive language that's been changed. So, I entertain any comments you have. And then, also just recognize that while we do feel that this is, we're in a good spot right now with this version. I think we do have to wait, see what the public says, and then, just take it all in, what they have to say, and then, see. There'll probably be some revisions after that, depending on the outcome. Excuse me, the attorney next in the next meeting.
Mario, in regards to section E, paragraph 9, that you just referenced, the liability release, would you say that it is standard practice for the amount of the liability insurance, essentially, is what we're talking about, I think, is to be set by the village council?
Yes. That's another one of those instances in which while there probably is a standard amount we might want to have, it's something that probably should be set by the village council, so that way, it either can be part of the general law ordinance, or it can be part of the policy that they annually review. For example, they usually review the fee schedule on an annual basis, and that can be updated as years go on. Rather than, if we reference a specific dollar amount in this ordinance, then that ordinance would have to be, we'd have to go through a public hearing and amend the ordinance to change that dollar amount.
No, I understand that, and I don't really have a desire to set that amount. I just want to make sure that this is not a discriminatory practice in that we would routinely require minimum liability amounts on policies for people who conduct business in our village.
I mean, it is something that most businesses already have. Whether they actually have to submit a copy of that to the village, I'm not sure if that's normal practice. So, that might be a little bit above and beyond, but I have noticed it in other, other seminal requirements for other marijuana operators in other municipalities.
I see. Yes, yes, sir.
Mario, is this intended to release, indemnifying, hold harmless the village?
That's some of the language, yeah, that's what it-
Okay.
That's the intent of that language supposed to be. That's something that I gleaned from other model ordinances. So, whether we feel that's necessary or not, I'm not sure.
Well, along those same lines, I just would, can I raise an issue?
Please do. That's what this is for.
Along the same lines, I found some language that was creeping its way into ordinances about, along the same lines about immunity. And the language reads, in a sense, as of the effective date of this ordinance, marijuana remains classified federally as a Schedule I Controlled Substance under the blah, 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 basically saying that by entering into this ordinance scheme and conducting this business, we're not as a village saying we're making you immune from federal prosecution. We don't have that authority. And I think that might go in the same paragraph, because there's been some busyness in this thing that, oh, if we get approved by a local government and we're running this the way we said we were going to run it, the feds can't touch us. Well, that's not really true.
Mm-hmm.
And I don't want to be in, I don't want you to be in that lawsuit when, you know, the feds come after them and they point to you and say, well, you approved me. You know, how could you give me a license if you knew this was a violation of federal law? So, as we sit here today, it's still a violation of federal law. So, I've got the language written, which I'll leave with Mario. It's made its way into the other ordinance schemes, under this sort of release thing.
That seems very reasonable to me. Do you agree, Mario?
Absolutely.
I'm still concerned about the council setting the amount. And I just don't, I'm afraid if we don't do that for other businesses, then this can be viewed as discriminatory.
You, one thing that I'd add-
And, you know, please correct me if I'm wrong. It's just how it seems to me in reading this.
Mario, in a normal site plan setting, we don't, like, say, on an open a 7-Eleven, we don't start setting what their property liability and general comprehensive policies have to be, right?
No. But then, I think- Gary, you might be referring to the fact that we don't also request that they provide a copy of their insurance for the other types of uses. Is that in-
Well, certainly, there's that too. You know, and that's not as onerous as far as I'm concerned. I mean, if part of the ordinance is you have to submit a copy of your liability policy so that we can, so we are certain that you are covered, well, we don't do that for everybody else, but it's not that hard to do that. But for the council to set a limit, a minimum limit, you know, to me, this is a business decision. As a business owner, I would want to make sure that my business and my property is insured as much as I can possibly afford, and it makes, at a level that makes sense for my business. And I don't think it's really the right of the government to come in and say, this is how much you have to have. You have to have, you know, whatever that amount. I don't know. I'm just not, I'm not comfortable with that, Mario.
Well, it could be that, because for us in the village, if the intent of this language is to make sure that something exists, as long as they provide some type of documentation that they have a insurance, that could be enough. And then, you know, a minimum level, don't want to have a minimum set, and you could do that, but also, you'd like to think that we just set a pretty modest amount. Because the rest of my, well, I really don't know too much about the insurance industry, and how much they would normally cost for that type of insurance for that type of use.
I mean, I guess, and then, you know, Bob, I would also ask you. I mean, does them having liability, does the village have any liability for a person who's conducting business inside the village limits?
No, they're, that's there.
That's- I mean, we can't be held-
There's this odd theory that might float around that, oh, well, you allowed the business, so you're complicit in what happened there. Never, it never works. You know, the county doesn't get sued. Local governments don't survive in law, you know, lawsuits against governments don't survive because we granted a site plan and we let the market open, and then, somebody tripped at the market, and now Johnny can't walk, so the village is liable. That never works. But I suspect when you're, if you get a bank loan or you're financed in some way, that there may be a loan requirement that you maintain insurance, and that you keep the place insured, just like if you lease a car.
Sure, or any mortgage or anything like that.
But I don't think in your general site planning, you start to say, and all your vehicles, you know, have to be insured in this amount. You need work comp in this amount for the workers there. You need unemployment insurance. You need, you know, property liability. I don't think we get into that. See, I thought the paragraph, this paragraph was somehow trying to create a special carve-out of indemnity and hold harmless or the protection of the village. That's the way I was reading it. I think we need the no-immunity provision, which I think covers a lot of that.
In regards to the idea of, it's still a Class I or Schedule I?
Yeah. I think that covers a lot of the blame game that could go on later.
Jack, at the township, have you ever had any issues?
No. We don't, we don't demand or require anybody to have insurance.
Mario, I just don't like this.
Well, it's good. That's why we're talking about it.
My commissioners, please feel free to chime in. I'm happy to hear an argument.
Mo's had her hand up until she was tired.
Mo, please.
It just gets really heavy.
Go ahead, Mo.
Okay, and I have to ask the first question before I can. Have we talked about a second ordinance?
Not yet.
Not yet.
Okay, because this seems like something, for some reason, I'm thinking the state requires a certain amount of insurance for them to open the facility.
And what you've said in this so far, from what I read, is if you're coming to us to get approval to do it here, you better meet all the bells and whistles with the state.
Right.
So, if they have an insurance requirement, you better, you gotta meet that.
I don't know what makes me think there's an insurance requirement there.
Well, there is some flirting with it in the regs. And they do background checks, and they do this, and they do all that. And we're presuming the person who comes to us is cloaked with all of those approvals. Because that's the way you kind of wrote this.
Right.
When you come to us, you better admit the department's rules.
And I'm thinking maybe this is something that well doesn't belong in the zoning ordinance portion, might end up in the other ordinance if we end up writing it. Well, that's because it's required by the state, and we'd have to find that out, so.
Well, I think what you could do in this ordinance is just make it even, I think it's pretty clear, but it could be crystal clear, that, you know, you, as an applicant, you need to, you need to come to us with all of your bells and whistles approved by the state of Michigan.
Yeah, you have to have, I think they call it a preapproval document that says, you know, you may not have everything right now, but you're basically preapproved because you've shown us that you're achieving everything that you're supposed to do in order to get-
And what you have in paragraph D1 is that the applicant has received prequalification to be licensed by the agency or designated successor. And they're appearing before you with that in hand.
Does anybody else have any comments about item 9?
Just take it out.
If I could just ask, Mario, how did you arrive at including this in the first place? What were you using as your reference to put it in?
Well, when it comes to the nature of this use, sometimes, because we, in my mind, I definitely think a second ordinance in terms of creating the business permit or the permit, the annual permit, is going to be necessary to have it. But once again, that's cloaked in the preapproval of not only, well, not only the preapproval, but also the final approval. Because you would like to think that once, when, because they will first go to the state, get their preapproval as an operator, then go out, finding a municipality, they'll find the village, and then, they will, meeting all our requirements, if they are approved, and then, go to the state and get their final approval. And I would think at that point in time, either in the first part or the second part, they're going to have to show the state their insurance. So, whether we do have to show it or not, you know, is not necessarily that important. I was, was one of, once again, one of those ways in which we're, one of those things like, all right, we already know you're going to do this at some point. Why don't you show it to us now? So, if we're a little uncomfortable with seeing that and having to set limits and everything, I don't have a problem taking it out. Especially if we focus it more on the liability release and what Bob was referring to with regards to federal statute, to ensure that the village is protected, is not, no one can presume that simply because we're going through this process, that it's any kind of tacit, you know.
Thumb to the federal law.
Just a sec.
Oh, Kelsey, go ahead.
So, Mr. Davis, at some point, would you read your suggested wording that you mentioned a few minutes ago?
I can. I can do it right now.
No, not yet. Just a minute. Kelsey.
Well, I guess what I'm going to say is probably redundant, but I just wanted to say that I think the no-immunity provision- Hold harmless, and then, there's the insurance requirement, which are separate. And so, I don't know that we can do either one of them, honestly, from just my experience with insurance. And so, I would recommend taking it out.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you, Kelsey. Jack, did you have your hand up?
No.
Bob, please take away.
What my suggested language was, don't write it down, because I'm going to give it to you. It, it was, I had it down as just the last paragraph. No immunity. As of the effective date of this ordinance, marijuana remains classified as a Schedule I Controlled Substance under the Federal Controlled Substances Act, comma, 21 U.S. Code, Section 801, which makes it unlawful to manufacture, distribute or dispense marijuana. Nothing in this ordinance creates or grants immunity to any person or entity from criminal prosecution under the applicable federal laws. And it's, it just is true. And it should be said that the applicants don't come to us thinking they've clothed themselves in a local ordinance and being immune. We're not guaranteeing that, and we don't want any part of them thinking we're guaranteeing.
So, briefly, Bob, how does that work? Has the federal government decided to turn their back on states making laws that allow what we're providing for?
If I knew the answer to that-
I don't understand how that-
I would have so much money, I wouldn't have to come here.
I know. Wouldn't it be great?
No, it's a great question. It, nobody knows the answer to that. Obviously, we live in a federal preemption universe here, right? Federal law preempts state. State has some preemption over local. So, the feds have not given up the designation of marijuana as a controlled Class A substance under federal law. That's why these places don't use federal banks for their transactions, because they're FDIC insured. And federal banks won't do business with unlawful activity. There's two banks now that I hear in the area who are starting to, you know, roll into cash business. That's one of the policing concerns for these facilities. It's an all-cash transaction.
It's all cash, yeah.
That's what police people worry about, you know, cash transaction businesses kind of-
Can be a source of crime.
Right. So, I don't know the answer to that. It will probably resolve itself at some point, one way or the other. I personally think we're headed towards a situation where marijuana is going to be legal in all, in all senses and in all levels.
Right.
But until then, I don't think we're promising people.
Right. I think that's important. I appreciate that. I'm, Mario, speaking as chair and as myself, I'm in favor of removing the language in item 9 as it currently exists in this document, and replacing it with the information that Bob is providing. That sounds much more sensible to me. I like that type of protection. I don't, I'm personally, I'm opposed to the government staying, at least us, saying what a person has had coverage for. I mean, I just, I, that's a business decision that they made, and they'll be required to make that decision, because the state's going to require it. So, I think it's redundant for us to get involved in making anything different than that. Does anybody else have any concerns about that? Mario, take that.
Mo, Mo raised her hand again.
Do they have to turn heads sometimes? This is Joe Frost.
I apologize.
I just want to say that they've been there about the fact. I think that should be on every application, so that every time, there's got to be some paper about this, it's in their face.
Yeah. And quite, you know, I think you're right. I think they all know it, but I think you're right. There's no shame in this language. Number one, it's accurate.
Right.
And number two, the more times we present it, the better.
I agree.
If I could, Mr. Chair, I have two other comments.
Yeah.
You know, kick around. I think, I think at the beginning of D, Mario, of D, where it says permitted and prohibited facilities, I think at the very beginning of that, before you get into one as a permitted facility and all the other stuff I really like, I think there has to be a general prohibition. And the prohibition would be something along, no person shall operate an adult-use marijuana establishment in the Village of Oxford without first complying with this ordinance and all applicable state laws. So, it's a general prohibition. You can't do this in our village unless you do it this way. Then, the rest is what you can do. And that leads me to the other issue, Mario, is I think-
Is that acceptable, what he's got at the very beginning? At the very top, says adult-use marijuana facility shall conform and be subject to the following. You want more than that?
Yes. I want the, I want the prohibitive. I want the ordinance to be prohibitive of you doing this without complying with this ordinance. That way, and I was going to tie it in, right before you said that, I was going to say, that would lead me to the end, Mario, where I think in here we need an enforcement provision, that anyone who violates this ordinance, you know, you have these ramifications of revocation and suspension, and I read all those. I think it's a misdemeanor to violate this ordinance. And that each day shall constitute a separate offense. That's what I'm seeing in other ordinance. And I have that language for you, Mario, as well. So, in other words, you know, if, who's the youngest person on this board?
Me!
If one of these young people, you know, just says, you know, hey, I'm just going to open up a marijuana facility because the voters spoke, and they said marijuana is legal in Michigan, right? So, I'm just going to, I'm going to convert my shop in the village to a marijuana. It's illegal. It's not that we don't allow it. It's prohibited unless we allow it. And there's a penalty for that. And the police would go over there and cite them, and I would take them to court as a misdemeanor.
Can that be worded into a zoning ordinance?
Yes.
Wow.
An enforcement provision. It's just an enforcement provision. It's like your other, it's like your other zoning ordinance. As Jack, you have a zoning, all your zoning ordinance, it says, you know, if you violate this provision of, and then, it's a nuisance per se and a misdemeanor, you know, blight. Blight's always in your, appears in your zoning ordinances. Other nuisances appear in your zoning ordinances.
Okay, good.
I'll give Mario that.
I'm in favor of that, you, Mario. Please, Mo.
Because this is actually, for part of our zoning ordinance, it gets inserted into our zoning ordinance. How does that language compare to the violation of our zoning ordinance now?
We'll look at it. See, you're saying we have a blanket provision?
I mean, this is going to be page 84 of 120-page document, and what in 19, how he says it's a violation of-
I just want to make sure we have an enforcement mechanism. And the enforcement mechanisms are better when there's a general prohibition followed by what you are allowed to do. So, first off, right off the bat, you can't have an establishment in our community, unless. And the rest that you've written so nicely is the unless. Unless you do this, unless you do this. Unless you do the blight.
Yeah, right. All right.
It's like, it's like any other thing. I mean, you can't just, you can't just open something in the township to, unless.
Yeah, you have to buy by the zoning ordinance.
Right. Or unless you want to. Just do what you want. Right, Jack?
All right. Thank you for that, Bob. I appreciate that. I'm in favor of adding that provision. Everybody agree? Any comments?
I wanted to hear the part about whether violation.
I think he's looking for it.
He is.
Yeah.
While he's doing that, I think we need at the end just a very standard, Mario, severability clause that says, you know, if one part of the ordinance is struck down by the legislature, it doesn't make the whole ordinance unconstitutional.
I think that's what the zoning ordinance take.
Right. We'll see. We'll check on that.
So, with all the changes we've made tonight, we're all set for our public hearing on the 17th. Is that correct?
Well, I would say yes, because the version that the public will see is once again a drag. So, this is the first time the public have an opportunity to comment on that. If the public stands up and says, where's your severability? Where's your enforcement? I think we can say, thank you very much for your comment. Our attorney has advised that that will be included, so that would be one of the changes that will occur. So, that's the thing. You can't, we'll let them take a crack at what they have in front of them now. We'll see if anybody finds out that, you know, the severability should be-
Change for you.
Yeah, we made, I often heard brilliant things come from public hearings I didn't think about.
And you'll be at the public hearing.
Once in a while. That's how I had that on the 17th, right?
Yes.
Did they make it in the House for Leader Terry?
Yeah.
So, Mario, are you suggesting then, if I can interrupt you for just a second, and you're looking, that this is the document that we're going to go to a public hearing with?
Yes.
Without making the changes that we've discussed tonight?
Correct.
Okay.
And that's mainly because of the public, the notification requirements, the fact that it's already published. You don't want to change your version that the public has availability to look at. Because right now, it's available at the counter for the public to come and take a look at.
This version right here.
That clean version without the strikeouts.
I understand. That's perfectly acceptable, as long as we're making notation of the things we want to change. And I'm sure that's the case.
Do we keep track of how many people take those? I don't know how many people want. Come, come up to the counter and get the written, like, all of its printed. I don't know. I don't think so.
Is it on the website too?
I believe, yeah, it should be. Pretty sure it is.
Mario, I did see another ordinance that, on your buffers, which I think you guys have done a great job on buffers, did a great job on buffers, recently created a five-hundred-foot distance from any substance abuse center already licensed by the state of Michigan. I think, I think the point was this.
You shouldn't be allowed to do it.
Except for, you know, you don't want to get frustrated at your, on your eleven step and then walk back so...
I mean, they held AA meetings here and they're within five-hundred feet, six bars. Come on.
I didn't think that was, I just wanted you to know, I just saw it in a new ordinance. I didn't kind of like it, but I thought it was interesting that they would, that they would put that in there.
All right. Are there any other comments or any other discussion in regards to the proposed ordinance we have in front of us?
Yes.
Please.
My, my largest one.
Oh, good.
Mario, a, I know you're still looking. I can't tell you're still. A, the issuance and the approval of a special use permit is, I, I found the case that I was hoping I would find, is a property right. When you get a special land use permit, when you go through the, it's a public hearing, you get a special land use permit and you meet the requirements of the special land use permit and then I grant you the special use permit, that becomes a property right. So, I, good.
Unless you state that it clearly goes with the business, the owner, or the entity.
Entity.
Yeah.
Correct. And revoking it, there are some courts that have said, "If you don't have that language, that would require a similar hearing." In other words, you can't just willy-nilly arbitrarily take away the property right there. So, we have to be careful on the language as to how the grant of the special use permit runs. It runs, as you had said, you know, to the, to the approved entity. So, here, here's the concern, Mario, is Jack, Jack was approved by the state and he's running the, and now, and now Sammy's running it. And yet, the, the, the special use permit, in a normal sense, runs with the land, just like a, like a ZDA variance. So, we have to, I think you and I, we just need to make sure that we're making it clear how this, how the special land use permit, when it's granted, what it applies to and to what business and how it gets revoked, process wise. Other than that, that was, that was my bigger procedural concern.
So, Mario, where do we introduce the fact that, that this permit is essentially a special land use permit?
It was in old D...
See, I see it all the way down to D nine.
D ten or D nine.
And that's, see, we make reference to revoking a special land use permit, but we don't ever define that this permit is actually a special land use permit authorized by...
Well, if you look at, if you look at B one, that's where you first enter this. I think.
Yeah. Oh, I see, there it is.
See it?
Okay. So, you do make reference to a special land use approval.
As indicated in four-point-one-point-two-nine-F, I think that's a section of your ordinance that covers, right, Mario? Well, that, that just is actually within this, because this is four-point-one-point-two-nine, then F, it was, it just specifically outlines the, the review procedures and authorization. And then that's the one that... And that's the one that leads... Paragraph F that leads to Article nine, chapter one. Which is your special land use. Correct. See how that works? Because at the time, when we were writing this, there's the, there's...
Same businesses.
Yeah, right. At the time, we had the option of having paragraph F, you know, be in addition to the standard procedure, add additional, well, actually not in that one. I was thinking more of the standards. No, that's just A leading to B leading to C.
Right.
Is really all that is. No. So, I just, I just think consistently, we just need to work on the language in D nine a little to make sure we're, our revocation of a property right is, is correct on how we do that. Because right now, you kind of got, you know, A, if the village manager, you know, thinks the, you know, he can suspend a property right, that, that may not fly. You might get sued on that by an angry applicant who, who feels like he didn't get a due process.
Right.
And, and Jack's absolutely right. The majority, I mean, the special land use, when if you just, without referencing it, is just given as a, as a property right and therefore runs in perpetuity with the land because it's something that's transferred amongst owners and it's not necessarily to get an approval when, when a land use trans, when a property transaction takes place. However, there, and it's one of those things, I'm not sure when that might have been different or if there's always been a difference in interpretation. There are definitely some other zoning ordinances where it specifically says that, that if it, if the specific, the special land use specifically references the business entity or that are, you know, issues it as a permit, then it can be revoked, provided you go through a process.
Correct.
Ours, now, now, Bob brings up a good point that we have to take a look at our language. One thing you might have to tweak at some point is the fact that in our special land use section, it does say that the duration, there's one specific paragraph with regards to duration of the special land use approval, that a special use approval runs with the land, shall run with the land and shall not be issued for specific periods unless the use is clearly temporary or time-related in nature. So, that one kind of ties you right there. So, you'd have to say, that language might have to be amended to reference the fact that we have the ability to, in the approval, reference that it can be approved. And then also, there's a second, the second section, and just looking at what we have to revise, the revocation of special land use approval, it's, this one is kind of specific. It says, "Approval of a special land use proposal and site plan may be revoked by the planning commission if construction is not in conformance with the approved plans." So, that indicates that during the, the construction process, they have the, at that point in time, if something happens, then you can revise and revoke the special land use. So, though, that paragraph would probably have to be revised as well in order to make sure that we're consistent because, as Bob was saying, you have to make sure that, that all them line up. Just like how Mo, you were saying, make sure that if we're, any violation of a zoning ordinance is a misdemeanor, to make sure that that's the case and that's a, forgive me if I'm wrong, Bob, but if it's a, there's the two different kinds of civil, civil fraction. Well, a leasing ordinance... Policing fraction versus a zoning ordinance. We'll, we'll look at it. I just want to make sure we're... But these are the kind of things that definitely need to, need to expert in terms of the enforcement and the, and the, making sure that all processes line up to how we want it. Because we wanted to make sure that we could revoke the special land use because we didn't want to necessarily have it given to the land and then the land, then it sit there and then, because then someone, say the per se, someone comes in, they violate it, and then they basically have a hold of the ticket because they have an approval for runs of the land. And then in theory, they could sell, sell it off for, you know, extensive amount, but not be an operator. And I believe our concern at that time when we discussed it was the idea that if they somehow weren't able to maintain their permit and retain their, their, their status, you know, why allow them to, to just transfer it to someone else? Right. And if you, if you, if you lose on that issue, believe me, the damages that they'll mount around what this facility would have, could have, should have made will be significant. And so, they'll hold this, this approval dear and fight against you having the right to revoke it.
Great. Kelsey, you had a comment?
Yeah, I've got a question for Bob. So, would you still recommend doing a special land use permit as opposed to a license?
Some people, some ordinances that you saw are using licenses as opposed to special use approvals. And they, and they just call it a license and then they run it through the same procedure.
Is there advantages to one over the other?
Well, a license, a license is by, more by its nature, specific to the business and the person of a license holder versus the recipient of a variance or a special use permit that runs generally, as Mario just read, with a lane.
Right.
You see, you see what I'm saying?
Sure.
So, a lot of ordinances in these instances are issuing licenses following the same criteria. It's just a different work. And one benefit, actually, of the special land use process is the fact that if this were used permitted by rights in a district and then we relied on that second ordinance and a license, within the zoning ordinance, a site plan wouldn't necessarily require the public to be made aware of the use going in. Now, if you don't necessarily want that to happen, then you could do that because then it would, everything could be done administratively and if someone, either an existing structure or a vacant piece of property, they just walked in with a site plan and they only need site plan approval, it wouldn't require any kind of public notification, no within three-hundred feet, no notice in the paper and that sort of thing. So, and, and, you know, it might come to that point based on all the other, you know, I mean, depending on how it goes and if, if any, any of the apprehensions that people have doesn't occur and it's, it's a normal business, it's just operating in, in certain locations, then, then things can, the ordinance can be changed. That's the thing, this isn't written in stone. Even once we get it, adopt, once it, something gets adopted and approved, we're probably going to find something there we want to change. But having said that, I think we, when we originally were crafting it, feel like the idea, all right, we're going to make sure that they go through an approval procedure because remember I was stressing it from the beginning, we're focused on the land use and, and the zoning aspect. And we had the cho, the first choice is always, is it a right permitted by being a landowner or is it a right granted landowner? Once, they go through a special use approval process.
Right.
So, and I've also seen other places in which they do, someone gets special use approval, but then they still get the permit, they still get a license.
Yep.
It's a suspenders and belt scenario.
Jack?
Under E two, I think the whole discussion of this was, you can't even come here unless you have a pre-approved state license. Once you have a pre-approved license, then you come here and we grant you a special land use to use following these rules in the ordinance, a hundred feet, block lines of yard...
Site plan approval, all that other...
Yes, right.
No, I, I like the way that's read. I mean, just, I just wanted to raise my global concern of giving and taking the right.
Special land use to...
You know, just been through that in, in the court system a couple of times and it's, it's, it's always been ruled, you know, that you had a public hearing to giveth a special use, you certainly can't take it away willy-nilly.
Yep.
Those are pretty good legal terms.
Mm-hmm.
That's not exactly how the court put it.
Yeah, but it's in the book. I've heard that.
Yeah.
It's in the text.
Sounds like a land...
Right.
Sounds very landest term. Correct. Use it a lot. So, I mean, that, that was the extent of my...
All right. I appreciate all that. I thought we'd be done with this in a few minutes, but this has been a fascinating conversation. I enjoyed this a lot. So, Bob, do you think that, do we need to make any specific changes in regards to this or is it just...
I think I can just shoot, I can shoot these language provisions over to Mario in the next day or two and then I can, Mario, I can just kind of tell you where I think they fit in. I don't think you guys should, you know, make these changes. Go to your public hearing, let's hear what comes up there and then let's...
Incorporate it.
Incorporate everything at once and eventually this will go to the board or the village council and I want to be in a position to be able to defend to the, to the council the language that you submitted.
Mm-hmm. I appreciate that.
And all the hard working done.
Thank you. Commissioner Leslie, any comments?
No.
All right. Mo?
I'm good.
Ms. Rose?
I'm satisfied.
Jack, how do you like this?
All good.
Big guy?
All set.
Ms. Leslie?
I think...
Kelsey, that's right. I know that every time.
I know. That's why I never looked that.
I know.
Now, they didn't have any money at all.
At least he's a good guy.
Yeah.
I'm good with this. My comment, though, is just for public, obviously, we're complying with the public notice requirements for the public hearing, but how do we get out to more people because not everybody reads the fine print and leader? So, I'm wondering if there's anything else we can do if we want a bigger crowd.
We're doing everything based on the law.
I know, which doesn't bring any people...
Terry, is it on our website?
It is. I pulled it up. It's on the website and so is the direct copy. The language that's posted in the paper, yeah, official notice and the direct copy.
You're always going to get a certain amount of people. So, I didn't know that was happening. I didn't know, I didn't know. You know, if you want to know, you're going to know.
Terry, do we have a Village of Oxford Facebook page?
Yes.
From, from the village?
No, we do not.
That's a shame.
They're the DDA...
Oh. We have, we have a very good and very vibrant community page. And I'm not opposed to posting something there, but, you know...
We can get that to the DDA.
It would just be my, you know, informal as the chair, I could, you know, drag somebody's attention to it and say, "Go, go look here if you want to read a copy of the proposed ordinance."
Well, we could announce it at our next council meeting, right?
That's a good idea. No.
Would, would my fellow commissioners have any problem with me posting things in the local...
We have social media, or, or, I wouldn't do it, Gary, without talking to the thinking for the word because I couldn't...
We don't have the policy to worry about. We're a communications person.
I would, we have a new communications person, Nicole.
But this has been, I think this is on your website. You've done all the public notice requirements. We'll announce it at the village council meeting.
Well, but I think Kelsey's point is, is valid. I mean, I, I would like to have this...
Why don't we have that with every public hearing?
I know, I know. That's, that's...
Are you, you're going to hold precedent?
And I don't, I don't necessarily want to set the precedence, but this is a likely wrong issue in some respects. And I, I don't want somebody coming back and saying, "Well, jeez, I wish I would have known about it."
It's the same as every issue we hold upon...
And I like, I like to keep it that way, Jack. I mean, I don't want to make this any more or less than any other thing that we would consider.
And you shouldn't.
Okay.
I won't, I won't post anything then.
I, you can. That's true, right. Because I'm going to do it in two minutes when you ask for commissioners' comments.
Okay.
I just mentioned...
I'll be there in just a minute. Stay with me. I'm helping you drive over the law. I appreciate that. Thank you very much. See, we're getting, we're getting it done real quick here. Thank you, Kelsey.
My comment stems from the fact that, like, as I talk to people around the village, they're, they're, they know, some people that aren't informed, they saw that actions at council have to opt out and so they think it's just done. They don't realize that we're working on anything. And so, I think it'll be a surprise to a lot of people when all of a sudden, this is not for council and they go back and say, hopefully, they come to the public hearings at council, guys, right? But they go back and say, "Well, I wish I would have known." That's no only reason I bring it up, it's just because of, it is such a hot topic and it just, people don't understand why we opted out and now we're working on it. They just don't, it's not something, but I'm fine with whatever.
All right. So, you got me spun up here, Kelsey, and I'm going to get, I'm going to get yaggie about this. All right. I'm a citizen of this village and I have the right to post on the local village community page, which is quite vibrant on Facebook. And I can do that as a citizen and a resident of the village or I can do it as the chair of the planning commission. And I don't think it makes any difference if I do it. I don't, I don't need to do it as the chairman of the, I mean, most people with those don't as the chairman of the, I mean, most people in the village don't know one chair, don't they, one guy, you know? So, I mean, it's not like you can easily connect the dots.
The word is out.
But I'm with Kelsey, I mean, I think that as many people as possible should know about this. If, if the community cares about this, they should be here when we discuss it.
That's why you hold a public hearing. Everyone that you hold a public hearing for is just as important as the other ones. Period. We hold public hearings and we announce them in papers, announce them on websites, we announce them everywhere, they are all important. None are more important than others.
All right. And I will say that I've been through various efforts where we follow, for any ordinance, any ordinance, I need to follow through what's exact, what's exactly required. Other communities go through organic effort because they feel one way or the other, they need public input. Never fails, you go through organic effort, someone, someone is going to turn up and say, why didn't I know about this?
I know.
You will never be able to do that. So, and that's not to say that, you know, should there always be more effort to reach out to the public, absolutely. And I think having the website, newly defined, newly created website, have it on there, but you're doing efforts and as Jack said, have it, you know, equal and do it for all the ordinance, because, because all the, all the work that you guys put into all of them are important to the people.
I think we're really just talking about keeping our personal communications in one bucket and official, as the planning commissioners, consistent with all the kind of communications we do here. And I think that's reasonable, so if you have a personal reason you want to post it and talk to people, go for it, because that's really, you're right in, but you're not doing it as the chair, you're doing it as Gary Douglas.
Yep.
Your neighbor, your friend, your colleague.
Gary, if you step out of bounds as, in your capacity as a chairperson, the perception will be you're doing that because you favor the ordinance.
Right.
Which is a predicate of how the people will say, well, he's going to help you.
Sure.
Do you want to do that?
No.
Because the purpose of the public hearing is to hear more, to help you form your vote. So, that's.
I appreciate that, Bob.
I won't, I won't be making a public comment. And the people who are interested will just have to pay attention.
Thank you. Ms. Rose?
Will council be also holding a public hearing on this or is this the only public hearing we're going to be having on it?
Oh, I think there'll be, before they have it, there may be a public hearing.
I know they have a first reading and second reading, but I don't know if they're required to have a public hearing on it or not.
They can, and we have other.
Okay, so there'll be a second opportunity for somebody to.
Residential.
Do we have to have a second hearing or a second reading? Do we have to have a second public hearing?
No, you're not, you don't adopt the ordinance, you're not in that process.
Okay. So we're going to, we're going to display it once, we can make changes to it, we can approve it and submit it.
Recommended.
You will submit, you will submit a recommended verdict to the village council for consideration.
Right. All right.
And then they can choose to have a public hearing if they want. They don't have to.
They don't have to. We've had public hearings on things and we've not on very administrative type ordinances.
All right, anything else in regards to this topic?
I'm good.
Bob, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I really appreciate your being able to guide us through some of the important things here. You've made some excellent recommendations.
I'll get the language over to Mario and we'll, we'll have it ready.
You just turned an A paper into an A-plus paper.
You guys did a great job on this.
I like that. It's been, it's been a good experience.
I'm sure there was a lot of.
Enjoyed this, yeah, it was, but Mario has been great. All right, I'll conclude that topic then. We move on to new business, there is none. I open it up to public comment. You're my public site, do you have anything you would like to say before the commission?
I'm good.
All right, thank you very much, I appreciate you being here. Okay, we move on to consultant administrative comments. Mario, is there anything you'd like to add to your 50 comments so far?
I'm going to add this time.
All right, thank you. Administrative comments, Secretary?
Um, no, just to, it's a point of interest of who is calling and very interested in what we're doing is all the marijuana people who would like to get in, you know, the front of the line, so to speak. So they are paying attention. We get calls weekly, sometimes two or three a day, wanting to know where we're at, and we have been posting on the website and keeping all that information up, the minutes and everything, so they can follow. But we have really not had attendance too much from people in the industry that are a lot of interest.
Good, that's good to know. All right, thank you very much. Commissioner comments. Leslie, is there anything you'd like to add?
No, not at this time.
Anything, Mo?
My only comment is Connie would like to see how long this Christmas tree is falling in the middle.
We'll make it so. Rose, anything you'd like to add? Would you like to do a ZDA update?
Uh, no, I think we've done a good job on creating this document and I appreciate Bob's and Mario's and everybody's comments on it. And also, there's been no ZDA review.
All right, thank you very much. Jack, would you like to make a township planning commission?
Sure, let me update you on the township planning commission. On December 12, there will be a public hearing for the PUD for Beaumont Medical Campus. We have, as you know, they were turned down on their certificate of need, but we're doing some creative PUD with Beaumont to that 25-acre parcel where we're going to allow them to phase this and build an ambulatory and diagnostic center, a day surgery type thing. And while they pursue legally their CON, once, if they win that, they would then be allowed to add phase two to it, which would be a seven-story, 117-bed hospital. So on December 12, that'd be the following Thursday at 7:00, there will be a public hearing for those in favor of or those that would like to speak against the Beaumont Hospital coming. So, you know, we advertise in the paper and we put it on our Facebook page.
Good for you.
And we talk about it amongst everybody. And other than that, that's the big, that's the elephant in our room.
Good, thank you very much. I see the chief's not here tonight, so we will not hear from DDA unless anybody else cares to make a comment. And then we turn back over to future business, which is the council has requested for a planning commission to review zoning ordinance of tattoo parlors to consider removing them from the adult business category. I don't think we're ready to talk about this, but this is on our radar. Mo, is there anything else? Do we want to talk about that tonight? We're not really prepared yet.
I can just, I can just remind you that there's been numerous inquiries to have a tattoo business, but it's currently in your zoning ordinance only for in the adult use area. And many people have come to the village through the clerk and through Joe, you know, wanting to have it in the general, more in the general business district. And so they were asking you, that was the point of sending it down, to see if, what you, what you all thought about that. There's no action for that today. But that's the background.
Okay.
We keep getting requests to fill some of these vacancies and they're not allowed But I think, you know, in general, tattoo places, I think have, from a perception standpoint, come a long ways. You know, you can get coffee there, not like everything, you know, it's, it's not like the Philippine Islands or Bangkok or something, it's a little more civilized now, a little more mainstream, I think.
Mainstream. All right. Do we have any kind of timeline on that?
I think if we start and say anywhere, if we take a look at our current ordinance, we can start and say anywhere.
We do have our annual action, planning report that goes to the council, that'll be at your next meeting and then as part of that is our annual action plan, so we can include that part as part of that and put that at the top of the list.
We need to do it in the editor September, our December 17 meeting, with the public hearing or our January meeting?
December 17.
Okay.
And that could be something where, depending on how the night goes, if you want to hold off and review it at your next one, but I just wanted to have a draft in front of you.
Sure. All right, I would then, if there's nothing else to discuss. Mr. Val and Kelsey?
I did forget.
I beg your pardon.
Were there comments?
You can't remember their names, it's not going to ask them for God's.
The guy's okay, I'm all set with comments.
Big guy, the Leslie.
Do you have any comments, big guy?
No.
Kelsey, any final comments you'd like to make?
No, thank you.
Bob, thank you again.
You're welcome.
I appreciate it. Terry, we appreciate your efforts always. Thank you very much. All right, with all of that said unnecessarily, is there a motion to adjourn at the meeting?
So.
All right, now, Terry, a motion in a second. All those in favor of adjournment, say goodbye by saying hi.
Hi.
All right, see y'all next time.